Okay, this is the Town of Sherburne Zoning Board of Appeals. It is Tuesday night, March 12th, 2024. I am Rick Novak, the Chair. We are joined by members Jonathan Fitch, Todd Labby, and Zach McBride. And we have a fairly full agenda, so I'd like to try to get going if we can. All right, petition 20, and we're not doing, we're not starting with the 40B tonight, so that'll be a refreshing change. Petition 2024-1, Tony Proctor, Clark House LLC for renewal of special permit, section 3.2.17 and 5.2.7, professional office space with signage at 18 North Main Street, Residential P District. Is there anyone here to speak for Clark House? Steven?
Steven, it is me. Steven Dusette, I'm a part owner of the building as well.
All right, is there anything you would like to say? Or is it just a straight renewal because your time's up and you want all the same conditions and more time?
I think, yeah, again, I was sucked into this meeting last minute, so if it's as simple as that, I would say yes, let's just renew it. Are there any things that I should consider that are an issue for you?
Well, certainly, Jeannie, we haven't had any complaints about how the place is being operated or anything like that, or notice of violation. He's got a bunch of conditions that he's got to comply with. And I'd probably be inclined to just renew those straight up and move on.
I'm happy with that.
And did we give him?
Five years.
Last time, it was, it's a five year, right? Yeah, okay. All right, so Steven, I'm going to take this as a petition for a straight renewal for another five years. Same conditions as your prior petition, number 21-902, from April of 2019. Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right, is there anyone here to speak, anyone else here to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here to speak against the petition? Okay, hearing none. Board members, might I hear a motion to approve the application for renewal for five years on the same conditions as prior decision 21902?
Motion to approve the detail that Rick just stated.
Okay, and is there a second for that?
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. We'll do it by roll call. Novak votes aye. Jonathan, you're muted.
Bitch, aye.
Labby, aye.
McBride, aye.
Okay, great. Mr. Dusette, you're renewed for another five years. We'll write it up.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and move on. I gotta catch a plane in the morning. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Mr. Waldron, I see you here. Do you wish to call your board to order within hours?
I'm just looking. I don't think we have a quorum, so I don't think we will. I only see Marion, unless I missed.
Well, should you become so moved to do so, raise your hand and we'll try to recognize you.
All right, thank you.
Any other boards that are trying to come to order, have a public meeting during our meeting? Daryl? Maybe not yet or not. She might be, she might be listening in.
Hi, can you hear me? I am phoning in in an attempt to have clear communication. So we don't feel we're going to need to comment on anything necessarily this evening, and if we do, we'll just do it as individual board members. Other than to say that for your non-40B items, we felt that if everything went through the usual processes, that it would come before our board as appropriate.
Okay, and you guys had no comments on?
The first item.
Yeah, the first item. Did you, you didn't raise your hand, so? Okay. Next up in the batting order, petition 2024-2, Ed Rose Automotive Repair Business with signage. Prior permit was 21901, same year, 2019. Various conditions. Mr. Rose, I saw you here a moment ago. There you are. Hi, Ed.
Hi, how are you?
All right.
Yeah, nothing changed. Just go along with another five years. It'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, another, just straight up renewal, no other changes at this point?
Nothing.
Okay. All right, I like simple. All right, is there anyone else to speak in favor of the petition of Ed Rose to continue operations under his current rules for the next five years? Is there anyone to speak against the petition of Ed Rose to continue Rose Automotive for the next five years? I don't see any. Alex, I think, Alex Weatherall is, I think, just reaching to adjust something on his screen as opposed to trying to get my attention. Okay, so hearing none, I would entertain a motion to renew the petition of Edward M. Rose and ECAM Rose LLC for renewal of a special permit under section 3.2.22, 5.2.3, and 5.2.7 for automotive repair business with signage at 26 North Main Street. Signage remain the same and all the conditions as set forth in petition 21-901, except for the expiration, which will be five years from tonight's date.
I make a motion to approve the special permit for Edward M. Rose and ECA M. Rose LLC on the same terms and conditions as the April 4th, 2019 decision, except for the expiration date, which will be five years from today.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Let's see, any? All in favor, say aye. Do it by roll call. Novak votes aye.
Bitch, aye.
Labby, aye.
McBride, aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Mr. Rose, thank you as always for your time. You're good for another five years.
Thank you.
All right. Next up in the batting order. Petition 2024-3, retail signage, excuse me, retail tenant with signage at the storefront. This is for 11, 11 South Main Street, where Arts is the ground floor, sort of street-facing operation. And looks like the application from Colin Flynn of Sherburne Commons LLC. Mr. Flynn, are you here? Jeannie, help me out. This looks like this was for an application for a new tenant down in the back?
It's a new tenant down in the back. I thought Mr. Flynn was gonna be here. I told him he should be here because it was a new tenant. It's gonna be, I know he said it was gonna be like a med spas type of thing. They have to get approval from the Board of Health. And I believe they've been in front of the Board of Health, but that's about it. Because there was some signage he wanted possibly in the back above the door, so, yeah.
But he didn't, but he didn't give us any examples of signs or what they'd look like or anything like that?
No.
Okay. All right, well, let's not decide right this second what to do with this. Let's assume that's put forward on the papers. Though I think we may need to know more before we make a final decision on him. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone else here? Is there anyone else here to speak against or in comment on the petition?
I have his cell phone. If you want to start the next two, I can call him and see if he's gonna be able to join us.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we should just defer this one for now. I was thinking, board members, as you're thinking about what to do with this, that we'd continue it to another hearing, because with a new tenant and him not coming and telling us anything and not giving us any signage, I don't think we can really help him too much.
Agreed.
Agreed.
All right, so Jeannie, so let's move on for this one from right now.
Daryl has your hand up, Rick.
Oh, yes, Daryl Barrettsley. Hello?
Given what you just said, that sounds fine. They are before us, but haven't finalized with the board.
Ah, okay, thank you. All right, so that's, so you, they're a person of interest before your board. Okay, great. We're gonna put that aside for now. Jeannie, don't let me close the meeting without deciding what to do with them, which might just be to defer to the next one. Continue to the next one. Okay. Next up, item number four, petition of Laura Robbins and Mark Williams and ZEATF LLC for special permit under sections 3.2.3, 3.2.18, and 5.2.7 to operate a restaurant and inn with signage at 33 North Main Street in the Business G District, current location of the Heritage. Is there anyone here to speak for the Fireside Tavern, Laura?
Hi, everyone. How are you? I don't think I've met everyone, and I'm so excited to be here tonight. I've met some of you, but not all of you. My business partner and other co-owner, Mark Williams, is also on this call. And first, we just want to say thank you for the opportunity. We're, I've been thinking about buying this property and this business since I moved to town in 2019, and it came to fruition this year, and I am thrilled. Mark and I plan to essentially keep it a restaurant and a tavern and a bar and not change too much other than the menu to a classic American menu and keep the events going. We inherited a bunch of events from the Ziskins. And what else is changing besides, you know, some of the staff in key leadership roles is our brand and our name. And, you know, we came up with the name the Fireside Tavern because we're going for comfort, cozy, community feel. And we are really thankful that in each and every room of this wonderful historic place, there is a fireplace. And so that's how we came up with the name Fireside Tavern. And we're hoping to continue operating as usual, as it's been for years and years with not too much changes.
Okay, and are you familiar with the, the seven conditions under which we last extended the inn's permit in 2020?
Yes, we're very familiar. We worked very closely with the Ziskins when we were going through everything in the buying process. And we, we anticipate keeping everything exactly as the conditions were and are not asking for anything additional.
Okay, so different operator, different menu, different signage, but from a legal compliance standpoint, same, same footprint essentially?
Exactly.
Okay, and let me just, because they're interested parties, read those conditions, which is the special permit would expire December 1, 2024. We'd, if we approved this, this would run for five years. Restaurant seating limited to a maximum of 130. Living accommodations, four transient rooms or three transient rooms and one transient suite. No pickup or delivery by trucks between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Operating hours of the restaurant, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM weekdays and Sundays, 7:00 AM to midnight on Saturdays. Advocate shield, parking lot lights, the lights were not directly visible across North Main Street. And there's some dog that does not like my reading here. That's all right. Permit holder and property shook and blow all applicable requirements of the Town of Sherburne bylaws and all of the town boards and regulations. Those were the rules from last time. And while we're at it, Jeannie, can you easily put up their, can somebody put up, or maybe Jeannie put up their sign? So people can see it?
I'd like to caveat this with, this is not how it's exactly gonna look. It's gonna look a little starker in what you see because it's gonna be, the logo letters are going to be black and coming out of the sign, so it won't be like a flat sign.
Okay, and, and, and for signage, one of the keys for our board is size. Will the signs be the same size or smaller than the Heritage signs?
They will be exactly the same, and that sign company, Sign Orama, came out and measured the old Heritage sign and is making it in the exact footprint.
Okay.
And same with the provisions space, the cafe space will be, it's the same size.
If we're gonna approve a sign, we'll need to, there we go. Thank you, Jeannie, whoever put that up. We will need to know a little bit about how the sign is going to look different than this just because we often approve look and feel of signs. So if you can sort of describe what will be different than this, that would be useful.
I can. I'm gonna read from what the Sign Orama man said when I said, "This looks stark." So he said, "The sign is great with a basic modern look." Unfortunately, in the drawing, he cannot show the main sign with a three-dimensional appearance to the letters because that, that will, that's impossible in this type of venue. He said that adding, and we're not going to be adding any sort of outline, except for it will be the same color and the same size, except that letters themselves will be three-dimensional. So it won't be flat the way that like you would see like a lawn sign is flat. The letters come out half an inch.
Okay, all right. Okay, and is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the petition to run a restaurant and inn with signage? And this is not to run what's sometimes called the Sherburne Out or, nor is it a ruling on outdoor entertainment. Those are next up. Anyone else here to speak in favor? Okay, anyone else here to speak against or with important, relevant comments on new special permit for the revised? I could keep wanting to call the Sherburne Inn, showing how old I am. What will now be the Fireside Tavern, but what used to be Heritage. Anyone else? Don't, Jean, Jonathan Downs, yes, sir.
Where do you guess? Laura and Mark have been putting a lot of time and energy into bringing this place back to to the town. There's been a lot of ongoing work, and I think the town needs to support them. It's nice to have local residents involved with it.
All right, great, thank you. Anyone else for, for or against? Jeannie, I don't see anyone.
Nope.
Okay, board members. Comments, thoughts, questions?
Rick, did I hear you say that this does not include the the takeout operation behind the inn?
Correct, that's a separate permit. That's the next up in the batting order.
That's what I thought, okay.
I look forward to my first walk down for a visit once you reopen.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve the application for a special permit for five years under the described conditions in accordance with the petition.
Okay, I make a motion for the allowance of a special permit under sections 3.2.3, 3.2.18, and 5.2.7 to, under the same conditions as our decision of January 31st, 2020 with respect to the application of the Heritage.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, moved and seconded. Any further discussion, board members? And just, just for the record, that prior decision, it was number 21921. All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, moved and seconded. Roll call, vote. Novak votes aye.
Bitch, aye.
Labby, aye.
McBride, aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Laura and Mark, good luck. We hope it's a big success for you.
Thank you.
But don't go away.
We're still here, don't worry.
Oh. Can I amend the motion, Jonathan, that maybe we add a condition that she come back when she's got her sign dialed in for further approval of the sign? Or are you comfortable with the sign, the way it is, that it's gonna be close enough?
You know, I think that the schematic of the sign is really close enough to what
Okay.
you described, it's gonna be the, the real sign with just raised letters.
I withdraw my suggestion of amendment. Easier that way, too. Okay, next up, number five, petition number 2024-5 to operate a retail package store, prepaid, prepackaged foods, coffee shop with signage at 33 A North Main Street under sections 3.2.19 and 5.2.7. And I'm assuming that this application is to be consistent with the application firmly held by the Ziskins under 21920 for the, for the building formerly known as the Sherburne Out. And I forget the operating name under which the Ziskins operated it. Special permit conditions, there were seven of them. Special permit expired December 21, 2024. Instead, it would be five years from now. Hours of operation, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Thursday. Hours for sale of liquor further limited by ABCC. So you will need to get an ABCC permit. Indoor seating for up to 12. Maintain the sign as depicted in a marked up layout plan. Are you going to have a separate sign for this one? Or what do you plan to do, Laura?
Yes, it's on that schematic that you brought up. It just says Fireside Cafe. So it's in the same footprint as the provisions sign.
Got it. Oh, that's right. They call it the provisions. Thank you. Okay. Maintain, then, again, these are running through the prior conditions that we'd be carrying forward. Maintain the site as the layout plan from 1987. Get all of the permits you need to operate this business because you need several, including a liquor license and a common vitillers. Signs conform to 5.2.7. And you have to, as usual, comply with all the other requirements of all the other town boards, especially the Board of Health. So do I understand your application correctly? Is that what you want?
You are correct. That is what, what we want, yes.
Okay, and is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? I'm going to deem Laura and Mark to have said, "Yes, we want to do this." I see their heads nodding.
Yes.
And I hear, and I hear a yes from Mark. Okay. Anyone else with any commentary? Mason K.
Hi, everybody. Mason K., 31 Everett Street. Couldn't be more excited about this. My wife, Juliana Howland, and I moved from Los Angeles a couple of years ago, and we knew we would be taking a hit in terms of food and coffee, moving out of the LA. Hearing about what Laura has planned for the Fireside Tavern and coffee shop is nothing but exciting, and I think while we do like a good cup of coffee, what we're even more excited about is the fact that Laura and Mark are going about this through a community lens and looking how it's going to impact Sherburne first. Whether it's a savvy business decision, time will tell, but I think that what we give Laura and Mark the most credit for is wanting to do this out of a sense of community support. So I've, I speak for this. I speak for the last one, but I didn't raise my hand. Really excited. Nice to see everybody.
All right, thank you. Anyone else with a comment for or against or neutral? Oops, Nancy Kelly, yes, ma'am. Nancy, you're muted. We still can't hear you. All right, she's withdrawing her comment. Nancy, if you're in favor of the project, why don't you put your thumb up? If you're against it, why don't you put your thumbs up? Thumbs up, okay, she's in favor. Two thumbs up, okay. We're having emoji testimony here. Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, Nancy. Anyone else with a commentary by sign gestures, assuming it's a polite sign gesture, about the project? Okay, hearing none. Board members, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think it's wonderful that local folk are gonna take over the operation of Heritage. I've been a fan of Heritage and the Sherburne Inn. I go as far back as you do, I guess, Rick, and I'm really, I'm really pleased at the enthusiasm that this partnership brings. And I just love the idea of having a revitalized restaurant downtown we can all go to.
Other board members? All right.
I share the same sentiments as Jonathan.
Okay. Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the petition for a period of five years for, under sections 3.2.19 and 5.2.7, under all of the terms and conditions of the prior decision, 21-920.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
There a second?
I second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further debate? All right, all in favor, aye. Do it by roll call. Novak votes aye.
Bitch, aye.
Labby, aye.
McBride, aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Well, two down, one to go. Now we come to outdoor entertainment. 33 North Main Street, prior special permit was 2022-13. It was a hotly negotiated topic, was special permit under section 3.2.34 for outdoor entertainment with a long list of eight conditions. Maybe I'll read them so that they'll be in the record. Make sure Laura, having, Laura and Mark, having done your homework, you're familiar with them. Those conditions are that outdoor entertainment is allowed for weekend operation hours on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday year round. Two weekend operation hours up to, up to 27 weekdays to be selected by the permit holder between May 1 and October 31 each year. Sound levels from outdoor entertainment shall not exceed the testing standard. Laura and Mark, I hope that Ms. Ziskin did a download and even gave you the testing device that she has to use to, excellent, okay.
Yes, we have it. We have it in our possession, and we've already used it, and we're familiar with it.
You have, you have neighbors who will be interested in that. A special permit will expire. Well, I think we have been doing them for one-year periods until we sort of, things could sort of settle out. So I'd propose that this be for a one-year period initially. Board members, we can discuss whether that's a good idea or not. Five, the permit holder shall create and preserve recorded test results at least once during each outdoor entertainment event. Permit holder shall submit all such test results to the ZBA not less frequently than every two weeks. Other parties may submit recorded test results if they wish. Remedies for outdoor entertainment exceeding the testing standards include revocation and holor in part of the special permit. And then finally, permit holder will comply with all other applicable Town of Sherburne requirements for the operation of the facility. So I assume, Mark and Laura, that what you want is that permit for a period of one year with those conditions?
At this point, yes, as you can imagine, and what Jen Ziskin has been, you know, on your committee talking about is that events do tend to book out, you know, two years in advance. And we have inherited many events that are within 24 creeping into 25. It does put us in an awkward position to sort of say, "We hope it'll work," but I have paid very close attention to past meeting recordings, and I do believe that if we adhere to the sound guidelines, we report Recordings and I do believe that if we adhere to the sound guidelines, we report on time. And we do everything, you know, within the special permit that there should be no problem with the extension. So I'm fine with one year with no other, you know, changes.
Well, you're you're correct that the point of the short special permit is not to torture you or make it hard to run your business. But to give the board and and the butters and a cha- a chance to revisit it, just in case things started to go sideways. But uh but but maybe the board, we can discuss, you know, whether whether two years is appropriate. Um, is there anyone else here tonight to speak in favor of the outdoor entertainment special permit? Steve Constantine. You got your hand electronic hand up before Mr. Weatherall by my count.
I do. Um, thanks, Rick. Uh, so so I think this is great. I'm very excited to see local. Um, ownership of the inn. I know we've had some problems in the past with um the previous owners of the inn. Uh, mostly having to do with outdoor entertainment. We'll see having to do with uh some of the events that were there. Um, the noise levels and all that. Um, so to talk to that a little bit more, and again, I don't want to take up a lot of time. Uh, if I can, can I have the uh? The um screen share?
Should be able to. Genie?
Yep.
Go ahead, Steve.
Perfect. Can folks see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, hopefully that's big enough. So Rick, the uh the nine items that you brought up um. In discussing this, those are listed out in the permit. This is the previous permit.
I think that's right.
Correct. And then what I've done is kind of made some changes that I'd like to see done. Just to make some small minor adjustments. And again, I'm 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 really happy to have the uh the local ownership. I think it's going to be great. And I am directly across the street. Um, so the first item, number one. Uh, instead of going year round, what I'd like to see is between May first and October thirty first. Each year, some folks might remember when this permit was first issued. Uh, it was pre-COVID and the concern there was we didn't want to make a whole lot of noise during the uh the school year. So that's why it was limited to May one to October thirty first. During COVID, um, a little more leeway, so they opened that up for the year. For the weekends. That's number one. Uh, the next item is sound levels. It's sound levels. Uh, not to exceed seventy decibels. So right now, the the way it's written. Uh, in the bylaw, it's seventy five decibels, um, which is. Very loud. I know it's kind of hard to imagine, but you can go on that a onto a website and you can see what seventy five decibels looks like. Hearing damage starts at seventy decibels. So what I'd like to see is see this roll back to to seventy. Um, number four, which I haven't read, um, one year permit, uh, which I think. Previously, uh, so that'd bring us to to March twelfth, twenty twenty five. So that's it. Again, I'm I'm definitely for. Uh, the new owner is getting the permit. I would just like minor adjustments that would help with the butters.
Okay, and Stephen, can can I ask you to leave that up for a minute or two?
Absolutely.
Please, um, okay, um. Well, applicant, how do you feel about rolling back the testing standard to seventy versus seventy five?
So I think I'd like to stick to what is um in the zoning regulations um and stick to that because then it stays. Um, concise and measurable. And I'm I'm not an audio specialist, but I do know that if we. Adhere to what is required by the zoning um audio decibels that um we should be in compliance overall and it won't be. Too much.
Okay. Anyone else with a got a commentary about the um seventy DBA standard? And Alex, if you want to, Alex, if you if your comments on something else, Alex, what Weatherall or you can speak to that, uh, you you had your hand up next.
No, I I just wanted to speak strongly in favor of an outdoor entertainment permit and I don't know decibels, but I'm strongly for it. And I think twelve months is insufficient. I'd rather give Laura twenty four months.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, Jonathan Douse.
It's actually Pam. We're sharing. I I don't think that we should change, one, this company's operating schedule just because they're new owners. I think the permit should be the same. That they were allowed to operate, not just between May and October. I think the permit should be the same and give them the opportunity. Um, I agree with Alex. I think two years is better. People are planning out their events. Um, it just makes it easier for them to book events and operate their business. Um, and we got to give them a chance first to see how they're going to operate. And, you know, they're Sherburne residents. They know what the issues are from the butters in the past. And I can personally guarantee from both of their characters, from both of their families, they're here for Sherburne. So let's let's give them a chance before we put even more, you know, restrictions on them trying to make a living here in our town. As residents themselves. So let's just, I vote, I strongly encourage you guys just to support. The permit as it was for the prior business, knowing that it's new owners and give them a shot.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and Stephen, can you take down your your screen sharing? Because I unfortunately then can't see the uh the various people attending the meeting.
How's that?
Okay, that's excellent. Thank you very much, sir. Um, and maybe we'll ask you to put it back up, so please don't lose it. Um, Mason K, you're next.
Thank you. Um. I don't want to hyper-focus on any one thing, but since it was brought up. Everybody's concerned about hearing damage. Um, say, the statement, hearing damage begins at seventy dB. Is pretty monolithic. Uh, and when you're in an outdoor ambient environment, distance attenuated sound. We certainly wouldn't want anything to be damaging to hearing. Um, the testing standard exists for a reason and it's certainly. Uh, safe. Uh, I I wouldn't worry about that. Once you start trying to legislate decibel volume. You can go down a rabbit hole, so it I would say if it's if there's precedent for that. The testing standard is is a is a perfectly normal thing for restaurants to use.
All right, thank you. Other comments on the outdoor entertainment permit, one way or another? Steph Harrison. Steph, there you go.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to um voice some support for the project overall. I was holding off my comment until this particular. Item because I thought this would be the one that might be a little bit more um controversial. So um I can certainly understand. The uh reservations of neighbors, but um I I think that, you know. When you live in a in a in a downtown area, a town center area, there are some. Um, there are some concessions that you make as a property owner to um to be a part of that piece of the community. And I I guess I would just say that I I don't think that this special permit is um. Or sorry, this permit is the place to change noise standards. I think that if there's like. A reason that the standard should be adjusted, it could be done um where it is in the zoning bylaws. Wh- where we see permits, you know, take more stringent standards tends to be. Where neighborhoods are um have special requirements, but if anywhere. The town center would be a place where the uh the noise standard, as it is in the zoning bylaw, um, I think should. Should carry. Um, so I would, I'm I'm really looking forward to a venue with. Outdoor entertainment. That's something that um. And and I and I will second the comments that I've heard that the character of both Mark Williams and Laura Robbins. Um, would would lend itself to tell us that they are going to do everything. I mean, they live in this community. They don't want to. They don't want to ruffle feathers, so they're going to play by the rules. Um, and so I just, I I guess my my point is just that I don't see that a permit would be a place to lower standards. Um, especially for a town center project.
Okay, and and just um to catch up people listening and and the other two board members who weren't on uh the last time we went through this. Um, the maximum that we can allow under the zoning bylaws, I think seventy five, whatever it says. We could, if we chose, as a matter of discretion, condition, impose a lower standard, and that's what Mr. Constantine is asking us to do. But so legally, we're allowed to do that. We could not raise it to eighty five, for example. And nobody's asked for that. Okay. Any, sorry, go ahead, Zach.
Thank you for that clarification, Rick. That was that was any one of my questions. So thank you.
Right, you know, we're trying here. Okay, does anyone else have anything further to say? I mean, Ed Rose. You muted it. Oh, there we go.
Hi, here we go. Uh, thank you very much. The the comments about. Lowering the standards for noise downtown, Steph just said. It's downtown. I hate to say it. The trucks you go by are a lot louder than the noise coming off their side patio there. And basically, like they said, the people book their weddings and their whatever parties they want. Sometimes a year, two years in advance. So giving them only one year does not really help them because they. Something could shut them down, something could happen. I just really feel that you should give them what. Uh, the heritage had before and don't change anything. And uh, like you said, they are local. I mean, they really want to make this work. They put a big investment in here. And it's their neighbors that they're going to be living with down there, feeding them. Showing them, you know, what a good time it is at the place and all that. It's their neighbors, so it's not like someone from out of town. And so I I'd say that you should not change anything.
All right.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ed. Anybody else? Leslie Doyle, I see a actual human hand being raised as opposed to electronic hand. We'll go old school.
I can't, I can't get my electronic one to work, I say.
Whoops.
Uh, Leslie Doyle, Sixth Apple Street. Um, I just want to say I'm really excited about this. I love the sense of community. Um. My husband knows Laura from getting eggs at her place and knows what a great operation she runs. My only comment was regarding. If it's restricted, if outdoor events are restricted to only certain parts of the year, is that going to be difficult on them as owners if they wanted to do creative things in the colder weather? Like, I think the previous owners did some like ice skating things and so forth, so I just wanted to ask that question.
That that's a smart question, and I should have asked the applicants, um, how do you feel about Mr. Constantine's proposed? Restriction to between May thirty one and October thirty one.
Uh, we would ask for no restrictions um to Leslie's point. Um, at this point, we have a business plan in in place. And we don't, we don't know, you know, a year from now what the winter will be and if it does necessitate some outdoor events. And um, I think in order to be nimble and and sort of, you know, get back some of our investment, we need to be. Be able to um not be restricted. Um, I do want to say, you know, and thank you, everyone, for your support. Um, we are neighbors. We are people. I live, you know, five minutes away and I have, between me and Mark, we have kids in every one of the schools. And we don't ever want to ruffle feathers and we do welcome conversation and, you know, I do, you know, Mr. Constantine, I, we haven't met. Um, you did show up at my house today uninvited looking for me, which was kind of awkward. I think this is a a a better forum for this type of stuff. But in the future, um, we do welcome constructive, you know, conversations. We do welcome. Um, making sure our neighbors feel okay about everything. And I think that if we start imposing restrictions now. Um, before we've had a chance to prove ourselves to the community, um, that that puts us behind, um, instead of pushing us forward.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to speak uh on the outdoor entertainment permit? Genie, I don't see anybody. Okay, board members, as always, your feelings are very important to me. What are your feelings on this topic? I think we need to discuss how we feel about it generally, how we feel about the seventy versus seventy five. How we feel about one years versus two, and how we feel about year round versus May October thirty first. So. What do you got?
Well, if if I might uh say a few things, I think we ought to keep the uh noise level where it is. Under the uh zoning bylaw. I I also think that we ought to extend the permit for two years, Rick. Um, my my recollection is that we. We really wanted the prior owner on a short leash. Um, after we had some issues with reporting. And I think that if the new owner understands that if there is a problem. We can revoke your permit. And uh. That's that's our remedy. Uh, if there's a problem, uh, and I I think that uh the two-year planning period. Makes makes sense to me. Uh, it does, I think, put all the more pressure on the owner to. To do a very good conscientious job of measuring sound levels and reporting them to us. Regularly as you are required to do. And I I think finally. I think we should make it year round. It ought to stay there. Uh, we don't know what the future holds. Uh, hopefully not COVID again or anything like it, but uh. There might be a reason why people want to spend more time outside. Uh, before May or after October. And I think that. I think that musical entertainment is a wonderful, wonderful thing to have in Sherburne. So. I'm all for it.
All right. Mr. McBride, Mr. Labby.
Yeah, um, I I remember when we recently, I guess it was only a few months back now, um. Approved the the permit for the the previous owners. Um, so I I'm not in favor of of. Changing the conditions as proposed by Mr. Constantine. I do believe it should be year rounds. Uh, I don't think changing the decibels. Uh, is appropriate. And I too believe that we should have a a two-year term on this permit. Um, for all the reasons that Jonathan stated, but but also I would say. We were very deliberate and specific in having that that previous permit be one year because of um. Past grievances, because of uh. Uh, I guess it would be failure to 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 properly manage the sound of events. Um, I I wouldn't want to handicap the new owners here uh in a way. And with terms that were put in place uh because of a failure to perform on behalf of of the the previous owners. Um, I I feel as though that would be unfair. And just as Jonathan said, we do have remedy here. Uh, if these terms are violated, we we are able to revoke your permit. Um, so I think those terms are well understood. Uh, I think twenty four months is certainly a a much more manageable time period. When looking at booking events as significant, as expensive, um, to not just host, but also to uh. It's a plan as as weddings. So I think twenty four months is much more appropriate.
Mr. McBride.
Um. I have nothing new to contribute uh other than I'm going to take Jonathan's uh esteemed uh wisdom here. That there will be appropriate redress if necessary. Um, uh, and other than that, you know, I I agree with uh keeping the conditions the same. I think we need to give them every opportunity to succeed. And succeed well.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to. Approve petition twenty twenty four dash six. For outdoor entertainment, thirty three North Main Street, under section three point two point thirty four. Under the following conditions, and I'll read them off. You guys can cross check me. Number one is going to stay the same. Outdoor entertainment is allowed for weekend operations hours on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, year round. Number two, for weekday operation hours up to twenty seven weekdays to be selected by the permit holder. Between May one and October thirty one each year. Sound levels from outdoor entertainment shall not exceed the testing standard, cap T, cap S, that's seventy five decibels. That's what's written in the zoning bylaw. The special permit will expire March twelfth, twenty twenty six, two years. Um, permit holder shall create and preserve recorded test results at least once during each outdoor entertainment event. Permit holder shall submit all test results to the ZBA not less frequently than every two weeks. Other parties may submit recorded test results if they wish. Remedies for outdoor entertainment exceeding the testing standard shall include revocation and holler in part. And number nine, permit holder shall comply with all other applicable town of Sherburne requirements for the operation of the facility. And number nine, permit holder shall comply with all other applicable town of Sherburne requirements for the operation of the facility. So if somebody wanted to make that motion. All right, well, we'll deem Mr., it was a tie. We'll deem Mr. Labby to have made it this time. And anybody want to second that? And Mr. Fitch will have seconded it.
I second that motion.
We'll have, we'll have to give people buzzers, like in the game shows.
Moved enough tonight.
Something like that. Okay, gentlemen, any further discussions? Okay, uh, do it by roll call. All in favor, say aye. No backvotes, aye.
Fitch, aye.
Labby, aye.
McBride, aye.
Okay. Um, Mr. Williams, Ms. Robbins, congratulations. You got your outdoor entertainment.
Thank you so much for your support.
Go forth and be, be successful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support.
And, and, and keep your records in tournament, please.
We will.
Yep, good. Very important.
Genie, may we please now return to, um, petition twenty twenty-four dash three for, um, eleven South Main Street Sherburne Commons. Do you have any update for us on that? Okay, I'm going to ask that we, uh, I'm going to ask that someone move that we continue that petition without action to our next, um, regularly scheduled meeting.
Uh, can I ask that you possibly set another meeting? I have a yes, a finding, I have a finding, um, for forty-two Whitney that has to be heard and uh, now I'll have this and also, uh, there may be a new owner of Rose's Automotive that's coming in for his permit, so, um, if we could set one for maybe the beginning of April.
Okay, all kidding aside, that's a very smart idea. Thank you for raising it and thank you for making me face it. Um, Board members, let me try to bring up my calendar. We've got a, uh, a hearing on Farm Road, the twentieth. We'll have continued hearings on, um, Washington Street. And we may want to, uh, have a short meeting, maybe this Friday morning if that works again to approve the, uh, the draft decision.
I will be unavailable Friday morning. I'm traveling.
All right, so let's not, so, so we, we can send around emails on when we, when we can meet on that one and just make sure that if we're going to have a meeting where we're all going to be there, that Genie has time to post it, so it can be posted. People can zoom in. Um, okay, turning back to, um, this issue of when we could next hold a regular hearing, um, calendar. Tuesday night, April second, gonna work for you, Genie? John shaking, he said, no, it doesn't work for him.
It doesn't work, okay.
Okay. I'm seeing a whole bunch of head shaking going on here. Wednesday, the third?
Yes, that's okay.
Todd, Zach?
Should be fine for me.
I'm just confirming on my end. I, I think, I think that's fine.
Okay.
All right. So, um, I'll amend my motion, which I'll make, that we continue petition uh, twenty twenty-four dash three, Collins Flynn Sherburne Commons LLC, retail space was signed at eleven South Main Street to April third, twenty twenty-four.
I'm sorry, Rick. I'm, oh, yeah, I'm, I'm actually not available that week.
I withdraw the motion. Well, the other thing is that if we, um, we'd have it, we'd have an, an active board even without Todd, and if it wasn't a forty B, where we're going to have, you know, a whole bunch of hearings and we needed continuity, we might be able to go ahead without it. What do you think?
I mean, it, it shouldn't be a long meeting.
Right. Will that be soon enough, Ge- Genie, for the people who want to come in for Rose's Automotive and the other person and this and that?
Yep.
Will you be able to get your, uh, notices in the papers and all that stuff?
I can.
Okay. All right, so how about we forget about Labby and the three of us go ahead without him?
Okay, we're back to the third.
He's, he's off the island that night.
Okay. Thanks, Todd.
But, 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 but don't get used to it. We're going to drag you right back in.
Oh, I'm very well aware.
Thank you so much. Okay, so, um, I, I renew my motion to continue twenty twenty-four dash three to, um, April third, twenty twenty-four, seven PM. Is there a second for that?
I second that.
Any further discussion? Nope, okay. Um, all in favor, say aye. We'll do it by roll call. Um, Novak votes aye.
Fitch, aye.
Labby, aye.
McBride, aye.
Okay, motion carries it, so continue. All right, our next item is going to be the continuation of Washington Street Sherburne Homes. I'm going to ask for like a, just a five-minute bio break, or let's make it like a three-minute bio break. And, uh, we can all be right back and we can start talking about that one. All right, see you in a couple of minutes. I think we actually got sorry. I was just saying I wanted to thank all the neighbors and the Washington Street applicant and other interested parties, um, for, uh, sitting through our other, our other petitions. We actually do do other things on the ZBA than, than here forty Bs, although it never seems that way. And, um, so now we're ready to proceed. All right. Let's give people another minute to come back. Bob and Paul, we didn't give you great guidance on what, uh, what to say tonight, so I will, I will take what, whatever you have. If you brought your site people, great. If you brought your septic people, whatever. Um, but we do have a whole nother hour for you, so go ahead. And if, and if you run out of things to say, I'm sure we have neighbors and, and other interested parties who will raise some issues for us.
Of course. Great, thank you, Rick. Um, I guess I'll start by saying that, uh, we are here to try to bring forty new families uh, who will be patrons of the Fireside Tavern and Rose's Automotive. Um, and we're quite excited about that. We hope, uh, everyone on the call is as well. Um, so I thought we would start with, um, uh, uh, talking a little bit, uh, about the building and the architecture of the building. Uh, and then also spend some time on, um, kind of what a light tech project is, how it works. Um, you know, how that kind of community comes, comes together and, and kind of how it is, uh, uh, maintained and, and run over time. Uh, and my partner, Dan Hubbard of Causeway Development is going to, uh, speak to that. I think for, you know, approximately fifteen minutes or so, uh, and then we can stop if it's all right, Rick, and take questions on anything that he uh, puts out there. And then I've also asked DGT, uh, Kevin Repulley and, uh, Bert Corey uh, to speak to the site uh, and the stormwater design and the septic design. Uh, and same thing, I, I've asked them to speak to us for fifteen, twenty minutes, something like that. And then, uh, we can take some questions and then, um, kind of hand it off, uh, back to you for, uh, wherever you want to go from there. Is that, is that makes sense?
That would be great. Uh, do I have someone from Tetra Tech here?
I don't see Steve, no.
Okay, well, they, they, they can listen to the, um, they, they can listen to the tape. But Bob, am I correct that you and Tetra Tech have a signed agreement? There are peer reviewer, they're all teed up to, to be the peer reviewer for this and nothing else needs to be done? Is that correct?
Well, well, Jeremy, uh, obviously has handled that and, uh, we reviewed the contract and it was acceptable to us. And I, I believe it's a con, well, it is a contract between the town and Tetra Tech. Obviously, it's our
Right, 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 yeah, sure. Uh, Jer- Jeremy, if you're, if you're, if you're, if you're paying attention and willing to speak to, is that contract all set from the town standpoint? Their chief procurement officer?
Yes, Rick, it's, it's all set. It's, it's signed and endorsed and good to go.
All right. In that case, Bob, excuse the interruption, please get, keep rolling.
Great, okay, so I'm going to hand it off to, uh, Dan Hubbard now.
Hi, everybody. I'm Dan Hubbard, uh, with Causeway Development, Bob's partner on this. Uh, I believe you heard from my business partner, Dave Trigorth, uh, at the last hearing. Um, I thought if it's acceptable, I can just pull up the, uh, slideshow that we shared last time, just to go over certain slides, but we're not going to run through the whole thing again, unless anybody wants a refresher on who we are and what we've done. Um, but I think I'll, I'll save you from that unless anybody has any specific questions.
Why, why don't you go to the project specifics?
Okay.
Please.
So, we'll scroll through this a little bit. Um, so as Bob said, we'll just talk through the architectural a little bit, uh, and then I'll come back to talking about affordability and how the low-income housing tax credit process works, uh, which is one of our specialties in mind specifically. Um, so, uh, I'll jump past site a little bit, uh, as the ex experts will, uh, talk about this a little bit more, but one thing to just simply point out is that uh, we are very hyper-focused on energy efficiency and, uh, solar production. Uh, so the plan here is to try to create enough energy on site, um, to, uh, be able to only need that. Uh, we'll still be connected to the grid, uh, as it won't always produce enough, but, uh, at least on the net, try to, uh, cover enough. So we have uh, side of our roof that won't be visible from the front, uh, covered with solar as well as a solar canopy here. Uh, also achieving, uh, that goal, a key to it is wrapping this building up really tightly so that it doesn't, uh, let a lot of energy go in heating and cooling. So we are aiming for passive house certification, uh, which we have uh, accomplished on our last two projects, uh, one in Chelsea and one in Hamilton. Uh, so we're taking that expertise and moving it over here. Um, as well as we will have some EV parking spaces and even more, uh, EV ready, uh, so kind of lined with conduit, ready to put in more chargers as we hope electric vehicles become more normal, uh, and more cost-effective. Um, so that's a big thing you kind of see on the site plan. I think from a, skip through the floor plans a little bit, um, but can come back to it if anybody wants. But just from an elevation standpoint, um, this will be, uh, the front side of the building, it's, you know, asphalt shingle, trying to be a somewhat traditional New England look. Um, you know, when we work in cities, we go a little bit more modern. Flat roofs, uh, we're coming, um, to a more suburban feel and trying to match that here. Uh, so architectural asphalt sing, shingles, um, lap siding with board and batten on the first floor here. Um, you know, other than that, uh, our windows are uh, will probably be triple glazed as I mentioned for the, um, energy standard. Um, but they're simulated divided light, uh, so that they don't look like, you know, a hyper-modern window. They, they look like a, uh, a normal window you might see on a single-family home. Um, so I think that's the, the main focus on design. I can jump back to it. We'll have our, we can have our architects at future meetings as well, who can get into a lot more fun nitty-gritty than I can. Um, but I'll just scroll back up to just talking about, um, the affordable housing component of this and low-income housing tax credit. So this project, uh, the idea is that all forty of the units are affordable at below sixty percent area median income. Um, the area median income for Sherburne is based off the Boston metro area, which ranges I think from Haverhill out to Ramingham and, you know, down within, uh, the ninety-five corridor, at least, and out towards four ninety-five in some places, uh, it's rather large. Uh, and currently, area median income for a single person is roughly a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so sixty percent for a single person, give or take, is about a sixty thousand dollar income. Uh, and it gets larger as, you know, family size goes up. Um, so what we're talking about for a one-bedroom, whether it's a single person or a two-person household is why we get the range from about household income of sixty-two, seventy-one thousand dollars right now being the max, um, for a two-bedroom household, seventy-one to eighty-nine, and for a three-bedroom, uh, eighty to a hundred thousand dollar income. Uh, that will be for thirty-two of the forty units. Another eight will be set aside for, uh, lower incomes than that, uh, about half that. Um, at thirty percent area median income. Um, and then the rent is, you know, ranges from sixteen seventy up to twenty-three fifteen. Uh, and both these median incomes and the rents that we're allowed to charge are produced and published by HUD every year, um, based on what they see with median income in the Boston area. Um, which has gone up quite a bit in the past decade that I've been working uh, on light tech projects in the area. Um, so that's, you know, who these folks are, I think, um, you know, the last project we had, there is incredible demand for this. I think, you know, these rents can seem like they're almost a little high for affordable housing, but we, the last project we had with these rents, we had thirty-eight units. I think we had four thousand applicants, uh, and we go through a very detailed lottery process. Um, you know, with six months of affirmative fair housing beforehand, uh, to make sure that everybody has an opportunity, uh, to apply for this housing and can be fairly selected, but it is in incredibly high demand and, uh, you know, the more we can build, uh, anywhere in the Commonwealth is a big benefit, uh, to a group of people that are severely rent burdened right now. Um, and then a little bit on funding, uh, so the low-income housing tax credit program, um, was, uh, came about, uh, late eighties, um, and it's basically a way to, uh, incentivize private developers, uh, to develop affordable housing instead of, um, you know, previously, you know, fifties, sixties, uh, being primarily the government doing it itself. Um, we apply to the state, uh, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, uh, for funding. They have an application period usually once a year, sometimes with another mini-round. Uh, they review everything about the project in detail. Uh, they usually get about ninety applicants and can fund thirty to forty of them. Um, so they select the best ones each year, uh, and if you're not selected, they'll tell you why. Uh, push you to the next year. If you need to make changes, they'll tell you to make some changes. Um, and they'll, uh, provide to the project, uh, uh, low-income credits, which you can then syndicate to the tax credit investors, which is usually a bank. Uh, will come in and be a primary partner on the project. Um, little getting into the nitty-gritty, but the reason behind that fundamentally is to have an extremely strong financial backing to the project in the equity position so that if anything were to happen to object and the developer, uh, being Bob and myself, uh, didn't have the capital to fix it. You have Bank of America or somebody on the hook to come in as, uh, an owner of the project. Fix any problem, come up with the capital that's needed in order to continue to get their tax credits through the process. Um, so that's kind of a buy design of the system to make sure that there's somebody with extremely strong capital standing behind it. And then the state will also support, uh, various other funds. There's the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Housing Stabilization Fund. They'll put in a bunch of other money um, to the project as long, as well as Massachusetts Low Income Tax Credits. Um, and so they stay on top of us constantly because they're going to fund eighty percent of this project at the end of the day. Um, and so we have annual audits, we have annual inspections. Uh, and, um, if anything comes up, we are, we and/or our tax credit investor are forced to take care of it. So, the result of that has been actually that, you know, these low-income projects are quite well capitalized. They last a really long time and they have a lot of eyes on them with a lot of financial incentives to take care of them. Um, so it's, it's been a pretty good program uh, to fix some of the issues that, you know, people have seen over the years with public housing, um, and come up with a a different way to finance and manage, uh, affordable housing. So, um, with that, I'm happy to get nerdy on the subject and, and talk more, but I might be going, uh, beyond where it's helpful. with that, I'm happy to get nerdy on the subject and talk more, but I might be going, uh, beyond where it's helpful, um, so I think, Bob, I can pass it back to you or open it up for any questions on these two fronts.
Sure, Rick. Rick, would you like to take questions at this point on, on those topic, on those two topics, or would you like us to?
Very much so for, for a few minutes, because I, I know people will have some, um. One that I, I might be able to help with is this whole idea of the affordable usings, u- units being oversubscribed and having to run a lottery and, and the like, um, that's very common and they do that under very heavy state oversight. Because, um, the, the opportunity for misconduct in running those lotteries is uh, i- i- is unfortunate and then the good news is that, that people like Dan have been running them for years and they know how to do it. Um, but, but there are lots of guardrails. It's not just Dan making up his own rules, um. And I'm sure Mr. Haverty would agree with me, as he always does on that point.
Yeah, the other thing I would say, Rick, is that, um, you know, these projects aren't that often they are done in places like Sherburne, um, and there's gonna be a lot of demand for folks. We have a great school system and, um, you know, it's a great place to live. And, uh, there's gonna be a lot of demand for this type of housing, uh, if and when we build it.
Right, got it, understood, um. Other questions for other parties on how the building works, how the tax credits work? Um, and people can hold those till later, but you're also welcome to raise some of them now. Uh, Michael Lesser. You're muted, Michael.
Marion was up there first, I'll let her go.
All right, I, 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 I didn't look quick enough. Marion, no disrespect intended, please.
Oh, no problem, uh, yeah, a simple question, actually, uh, with the forty B process, we know there's a local uh, a local preference mechanism whereby a town can request, I think, up to seventy percent of the units, uh, in the lottery being a preference for people that are working in town or, or living in town. Is there the same thing with, uh, this program?
Uh, yes, that's correct. So, um, same exact concept, you're allowed to request up to seventy percent, um, it's not, uh, by right that you will get it, but if you can explain, uh, that there's a need for it. I've personally always seen it granted, uh, so I would expect, uh, if that's something the town's interested in, uh, the state would be open to approving it.
And, and other similar projects we have been because, um, as, as Bob and others point out, our, our housing is not inexpensive here and it's very hard for a teacher, fireman, policeman, anyone else working in town um, to, uh, to ch- children of, children who grew up here. It's just a very expensive place to be. Um, Mike Lesser.
Michael Lesser, fifty-four Forest Street, um. I, I know that a lot of other people raise those issues about the fact that there's concerns about the scale for water and septic, uh, at the moment, I just it's before leaving that for, which will come up. I do want to say that I appreciate the, uh, passive house design. I think that's wonderful hurdles for you to do that, that will make a big difference uh, in this project there. Um, I will then say that you don't have to answer it now, but to put in your list of things to be able to specify how the solar would be organized, because that was an issue that came up with another project in terms of the, the business model for the solar, um. And, no, I can't answer it now, and I'll just say one other thing that you could, you could answer an hour later, um, is given the water concerns for the, uh, number of, uh, units there and, and the issues about our sustainability of water supply, whether at some point you can outline what was wonderful you're doing on the energy side, but what more you can do on the, uh, water efficiency uh, side to minimize things there or whatever it is, gray water, I don't know, whatever creativity you can have to address uh, the water use issues that will obviously be a big concern here.
Just to address really quickly, Michael, the, the issue on, uh, uh, where the capital comes from for the solar, um, I actually don't think we're gonna need any, uh, uh, local variances in order to do the solar part of the project. So it's not clear to me that that's kind of a an issue at all for the town. In other words, that'll be done the way any other solar project is done and financed and it's, it's not clear to me that the financial structure is something that, uh, is part of the forty B review process. If if I'm wrong, Paul, please tell me, but it's, it's not clear to me at all that it is.
It's all a matter of the affordability issue, whether, what, there's different models.
What I can, what I can, what, what I can tell you, Michael, is that in this case, the power to the extent there is demand will all go to affordable housing.
Yeah, I, 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 I think we're talking past each other a little bit, and I think what Bob is trying to ask Paul Haverty, and I'll be interested to hear the answer is is this solar facility as of right without any waivers under the town's existing zoning? I, I think it may have a little bit of a problem that it's, it's mounted on, on a building that wouldn't otherwise be allowed, um. But, uh, to tell me, tell me if I'm missing that.
Well, I, I think what we're talking about is separate processes. We're not looking for approval of the solar as part of this process. Um, it would be done, you know, through a separate permitting process. It would not be contingent upon the forty B.
It, it wouldn't be, it, it, it's shown on the forty B building, but it's not part of the forty B project.
In that we're not looking for waivers, uh, any local waiver.
Well, if your forty B is approved, are you going to go into the town and try to pull the building permit and put that solar thing on top of it without further permits?
But I, I think it is permital, permissible under the local.
All right, was, all right, so, so, so that'll, that'll be the issue and we don't have to, we don't have to thrash it through tonight, but the question is, you know, if, if the solar is not owned by the forty B applicant, it can't get the benefit of forty B. This was, this is the problem on, on the other side where, um, and, and so.
Which is why we went.
To disentangle those lines for us.
We're not asking for that benefit right now, Rick. We're just trying to tell you that we're, we want to do this and.
It, 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 it's, it's an issue we'll come back to. I, I, I get it, um, okay, um, Pete Hebert.
Hi, Pete Hebert, sixteen Old Orchard Road. Um, I do have concerns, obviously, about the water and the septic, but my gravest concern is the size of the project and what increase in traffic and noise it might cause to our neighborhood, particularly due to the proximity of the entrance, almost directly across the street from Old Orchard, almost recreating another Maple Street, Washington Street intersection. So we've all experienced in our neighborhood when detours go through Old Orchard and all of a sudden our neighborhood that my kids ride their bikes on the street, I walk my dog without a leash on the street, turns into Route sixteen, so that is my gravest concern due to the size of the project, forty units, eighty cars, all of a sudden, you know, our neighborhood is gonna turn into a mini highway between Washington Street and Maple Street, and frankly, I think it's unreasonable.
Okay, and Pete, that, that's a legit issue to keep a very careful eye on what the uh, peer reviewer says about traffic and what the applicants, uh, engineers who, uh, will, will say about traffic and, and the turns and the impacts on, on your local roadway across the street. So a live issue. Go ahead, Bob.
Point of, nation, a point of information for the folks listening in, uh, we have submitted a traffic study to, to you, the ZBA, uh, that is posted, I believe, on the town website, uh, and at some point we'll get our traffic folks to come in and present. I didn't bring them tonight because I didn't understand that that's
Sure, sure.
So, but, yes, of course, we're gonna discuss those issues.
Okay, um. Other issues people wish to raise. Michael Mahoney.
Hi, guys, thanks, um. Appreciate the, the detailed, uh, overview of, of the, the model, and I guess, um, to, to sort of echo Pete's, uh, commentary, I think just related to volume and, and I know that, uh, it Pete and others have raised in previous meetings, the, um, the impact of the size and scale of this particular development. Um, and I guess I hadn't thought through it as much until you presented at, um, the, the model and thinking through, in particularly in light of the, um, Greenwood Homes currently not moving forward and be that permit being declined. I'm curious just about the business model and, and you know, if you're thinking about right now, at least the quick math off the top of my head, this is just generates just short of a million dollars in, in rental income um, per year. One of the things I know that all, as, as neighbors in the area, uh, at fifty-six Greenwood Street, uh, uh, for me, uh, have expressed concern of is, does it need to be at this scale? Does it need to be forty units? And, and, um, and I just actually would love to hear your commentary. Purely from a business standpoint, does the model work? Like if Greenwood Homes doesn't happen and all of a sudden we say, well, you know what? We all are supportive of the concept of affordable housing. It seems to be, you know, it's, it, our, our, our intention is, is solid and believe in, in the premise of it, but should we be shoving forty units into a parcel land where we all have concerns about traffic, about water, about the immediate scale and impact on our schools, um, if all of a sudden it was, hey, you know what, Greenwood Homes isn't happening and, and we think this should be twenty units. Does, does that, I mean, you guys are business people, you're smart business people. What, what, how does that work? How, how, how would you kind of respond to that as it relates to thinking about where we might discuss variability in this project?
Yeah, and, 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 and Bob, just before I recognize you, because I, I do want you to respond to that, and I know you want to. Um, and, and you, you are the person to respond to it, absolutely. Um, just to give everybody contact, context, uh, last Friday, the ZBA voted to deny the Greenwood Homes project. That does not necessarily mean it's dead forever. It's entirely possible that Mr. Murchison and Mr. Haverty will all go up to hack and, and they may not be fully pleased with our decision. They may ask, um, Hack to set aside in whole or in part, or that, or they may decide that we did, did just a great job and they'll send us all bouquets. Um, I'm, I'm more inclined towards betting on the former than the latter, but, but one never knows. Um, so, eh, you know, that, that project may or may not happen is, is, is all I'm saying by way of, of context. Now, Bob, please go ahead.
Yes, I guess I'd start by saying, yes, Greenwood was denied, um, uh, we, as Rick said, it's not at all clear that it's the end of the conversation about homes on, on Greenwood Street, um, but that's not for tonight's conversation, obviously, um. Michael, you asked a, a, a hu- a huge question, and I'm not gonna be able to have the time here tonight. I would love to have an hour long conversation with you, because I really would like to answer in detail your question. Um, I can't do that tonight. If you want to call me, I would love to do that. I'll talk to anybody. I, I talked to uh, someone else on this call who, who reached out to me and wanted to understand what I'm doing, and I, I spent an hour with her uh, a week ago, and I do this, offer to do the same thing with you, because I think it's a really important topic. Um, just very briefly, what I would say in answer to your question, because really what you're asking is why does the scale have to be uh, what it is, um, and there are a couple of answers to that. One, in the case of a Lytec project, um, you can't do a, a Lytec project at half of, half of this scale. In other words, you really need to get up to make the tax credit program. I mean, the the lawyers alone on a Lytec project are incredibly expensive. You know, there's a certain, you know, scale that you have to achieve, and suffice it to say that we're kind of around the scale that works for a Lytec project. Um, kind of beyond that, um, the other issue is that, let's face it, to do affordable housing, you, you can't put, you can't do, with the exception of Greenwood, which I tried to do, uh, um, you can't do single family homes on, you know, two acre lots and build affordable housing. The economics just doesn't even come close to working ever. Um, and honestly, eh, you know, I'm trying several different things around town. I'm trying to do single family cottages over on Farm Road as a way to do affordable housing. Obviously, that's not an all affordable, that's twenty-five percent affordable, but I'm trying different models within town. Um, I've got, you know, an eight, uh, home project that I've proposed. Um, but the answer to your question is it's really hard to do affordable housing without having more density than two acre lots, uh, uh, you know, one home on two acre lots. It just doesn't work. Um, but I'll just leave it at that, and, and I'd love to take your call, Michael, and really get into the details, because I'm passionate about it. So, thank you.
No, I, I, I appreciate the answer and, and just wanted to say, I'll, I'll, I'll take you up on that, um, but that, that was as we have talked about, as the scale, I think that, that many of the neighbors have expressed concern over because of the environmental impact, because of the schools, because of the traffic. Um, want to be clear as to, you know, if we said, oh, well, we, we really, we'd be supportive of this if there were twenty units instead of, of forty, I I want to be realistic about the business concerns associated with that, and, and I appreciate that. I think your answer's very helpful. So, thank you.
Uh, Pete Hebert.
I just want to reiterate Mr. Mahoney's concerns. After going through Hoppington and living there fifteen years and suffering through the Western Nurseries project and seeing what happened to the community and the schools, if Farm Road was eight, Greenwood was four, Washington was eight, there would be no concern. I don't think any of our neighbors would really be worried about the traffic, the noise, et cetera, but forty, thirty-two, it just, it seems a bit much, and we're concerned at Pine Hill too, where, you know, I have two kids at Pine Hill, one at the high school, where I saw in Hoppington, it changed dramatically after Western Nurseries and kids were put in trailers. So, um, that's just my concern, and I just want to reiterate, like I said, Mr. Mahoney's point that if it was a smaller scale, I think we would all welcome, you know, affordable housing, and we understand that it's a need, but it's just the, 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 the scale of it of forty at the end of our street where I'm just like, oh, man, P kid, cars are just gonna be whipping down our street and, uh, that's my major concern.
Yeah, tha- thank you, Pete. I, I will say that, that.
Bob, Bob, if, 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 if you can wait, wait for just a moment, um, Pete, I I, I need to interject here as, as I did last time, and I will, each time you bring up the schools, we're not allowed to consider impact on the schools. And, and, and I know, I know you don't, don't agree with that, but, but, but that, that is, the law is very clear on that, and so if we base our decision on adverse impact on the schools, uh, we will not only be ineffective, but we'll, we'll be laughed at. So I, I hear that, I, I hear that in real life, it's an issue, but, uh, but legally we cannot consider it.
It's not that I, it's not that I disagree, I'm just, uh, naive to these proceedings.
Okay, but I, I, I understand, we just, we just can't consider that. Bob, go ahead.
I was just, I was just gonna say that, you know, Greenwood was for homes, um, and, you know, it was denied, so. Uh, and then with regard to the schools, the comment I would make there, and I completely agree with what you said, Rick, obviously, that's, that's the law. But what I would say from a non legal perspective is that we have an obligation to share our resources up to ten percent. That's what the state has asked us to do, and that's why forty B exists, and that's my personal opinion, and I don't expect people to agree with it, but that's, that's how I think about it.
Okay, thank you. Michael Stellar first, then Leslie Doyle.
Yeah, thanks, Rick. Uh, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, uh, I'm a professional engineer, licensed site professional, just coming into this issue, so I'm sorry if I don't have all of the background on it. Uh, but I did take a quick look through some of the documents that are up on the website tonight. Uh, really focused on the septic water supply issues. I heard, I think Tetra Tech is now, uh, uh, under contract as a third party reviewer, peer reviewer, so hopefully they're uh, listening to this, or we'll see the notes from this and they can take these comments, uh. Some of them are probably pretty technical, uh, but the, I did notice there's some hydraulic conductivity inconsistencies in the design. The, uh, septic report, uh, was based on perk tests from November twenty twenty-two, which I think may have been during a drought period, but they had a hydraulic conductivity of, of, uh, fourteen feet per day. Uh, whereas the more recent stormwater report, uh, the test pits on that indicated hydraulic conductivity is of one tenth of that, uh, one to two feet per day. So there's some inconsistencies there. I did not see the deep hole test pits locations on the board health plan. Um, so maybe that's part of it, although these are, you know, these should be representative of not just very localized soil conditions, but broader soil conditions, especially where you've got a large footprint for your septic, a large footprint for your stormwater infiltration. Uh, I did not see any reserve area for the leach field, uh, site of this magnitude with forty families living out there. Um, I would be concerned, uh, ten years, twenty years, thirty years, leach fields do not last forever. What's gonna happen when that fit, system fails, that leach field fails, there is no second location to put another one. Um, so that, that seems to me to be almost a fatal flaw, um. But again, comments for the peer reviewer. Um, I got excited when I saw pumping and mounding report, uh, as us, uh, geeky engineers do. But it's all hypothetical. There is no field test for a system of this magnitude of forty households. But it's all hypothetical. There is no field test for a system of this magnitude of forty households, several thousand gallons of infiltration. Uh, the drought I already mentioned, I guess those are my, my, most of my comments on the septic design and related to the stormwater information more recently. Uh, for the water supply, uh, it seems to me this is going to be a public water supply system. Um, but I don't see any, I don't see any testing, you know, over, are these going to be overburdened wells, bedrock wells? Um, has, has there been any monitoring wells, any wells installed to see if this, this ground can even support this type of extraction continuously? For, for this, this size, uh, project, I think that, that certainly needs to be done. If it's been out there and I missed it, I'm sorry. Or is that forthcoming? Well, I guess that's a question for Bob. Where does that stand?
Let me just pause you right there and let Bob answer. But I believe Bob's answer is probably going to be that they have a detailed presentation coming on water in which they'll, they'll bring in all those answers. But Bob, you can probably say
Yeah, thank you, Michael, for all the questions. We're, we're jumping around a little bit here in that it was our intent, we were going to focus on for uh, on architecture and the Lytec issues and kind of the more community issues. And we were going to turn in a few minutes to a presentation by the engineers. Um, and then I would assume take questions like yours, which are perfectly all reasonable questions. It's just we're a little bit jumping around at the moment. Um, what, one, one thing I would, uh, say on the, on the drought issue is that, um, the, if you're, are you talking about the, the depth of groundwater? Was that relative to drought conditions? Is that what you were asking, Michael?
Yeah, and the soil is also based on modeling. I know a soil test
That was the point.
A system of this magnitude
That was the point.
It makes sense more than just simple perk tests, which are typically done for a single-family home, where you've got a lot of, uh, conservative assumptions, factors, et cetera. You've got reserve areas, you've got reserved space, which is part of the reason why, you know, the zoning was done at one, two acres way back in the day. A very different system, a very different condition that needs to be very specifically engineered for all of these conditions relative to the very tight site constraints that you have and the complexities of, you know, extracting and infiltrating all of this water sewage in the same space and in close proximity to wetlands, as well as, you know, adjacent, uh, existing butters water supplies and, and new wat- new butters water supplies, I expect. Uh, as shown on your plan lots one, two, and three, uh, probably in the future. So I guess that, that would be my last part of the, the commentary. I apologize if I jumped ahead or skipped around. Look forward to, you know, seeing more information.
The only, the only piece of information I was going to give you was that, uh, the depth of groundwater is determined by modeling, but obviously
Yeah, yeah.
All of your other questions are going to need, uh, to be addressed by the engineer. Whether we have time to address all of them this evening, I'm going to leave that up to Rick. Um, but, uh, that's where we were going to go next. Rick, would you like me to go now to have the DGT?
I think we had one, at least one more question, uh, but then I think I would like to jump back to you so that we can give you a nice, nice block to present in. Um, Leslie Doyle, I think, I think you are next. Oops, but you're muted.
I apologize. Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Murchison. I agree with you that we have an obligation to share our resources. Um, what I question is the value of citing affordable housing in an area that's entirely isolated from stores, medical facilities, anything walkable. I just feel like there's a lot of people that could benefit from this that probably don't have a car or are elderly, and that's going to exclude all those people. So I just was wondering if you could speak to the rationale for selecting a site like this.
Sure, sure. Um, so the rationale for selecting this site is, one, it was available, obviously. Uh, secondly, I, I think we as a community should be really, really careful about, uh, trying to speak for people with fewer resources and say that, you know, oh, they don't have cars, they need to walk to shopping, they need to walk to here, they need to walk to there. I, I don't want to make those presumptions about people with less resources than myself because I don't think that's appropriate. Um, I think that people who want to live in a city and they want to use public transportation, uh, you know, Dan has built projects all over, uh, you know, Massachusetts cities where people can use public transportation. There's also a need for affordable housing in places without public transportation, and that would be Sherburne. And so, you know, I'm not sure where in Sherburne would be better than the site that we've chosen for the project. You know, I've spoken to town leaders about doing something like this on Coolidge Street, which is a, you know, a different location in town, obviously closer to um, Framingham and Natick, um, and people don't want it there. Uh, so at the end of the day, you know, we have an obligation to provide affordable housing in our town. And the fact that we don't have, uh, public transportation nearby, um, that doesn't mean we don't still need to provide affordable housing in our town. So, um, I'm just going to kind of punt on that one. Does that answer your question or no?
It does. I mean, I, I don't think we agree. I feel like it's still excludes elderly people. I certainly realize there are limited options in Sherburne where this can be done. It just, it just feels like it's going to exclude a lot of people. I'm not speaking for people that are low income. Those are statistics, but you know, there are statistics based on, you know, vehicle ownership. And I just feel like it's, it would be a shame to invest this much in something. I know that there's good reason for it, and I agree with you that, but it just seems like the size and scale of it is a little crazy. And it also isn't even giving people access to any amenities. So it's kind of putting people a little bit of a disadvantage. Like you're getting affordable housing, but you're kind of burdened with some other financial obligations. So, um, that was my thought on that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, we'll just leave it at kind of a agree to disagree place. I'm happy to go on.
There's lots of room for that. Okay, um, and maybe that's a good note, Bob. If you have, if your water people are ready to present.
Well, it's not, it's not, um, uh, the public water supply, I kind of left off tonight.
Sure. Okay, then tell me, tell me what you are ready to present then.
In, in, in some ways, uh, what I'll just say about the public water supply is we've determined that from a, uh, regulatory perspective, it is possible, it's comfortable to do a public water supply uh, on the site. You know, we have, we'll have about twelve, uh, kind of untouched acres left on the site when we're, when we're done. And that's where the public water supply will go. Um, ultimately, as you know, that's regulated by Mass DEP and not by the town. We will, of course, come in and, and explain to you what we're, uh, what we're designing and going to work with Mass DEP to permit eventually. Um, but that's just not going to be tonight. But I, I want to say that we'll do that at some point when you're ready for it. Um, what I'd like to do now is turn it over to, uh, DGT, which for those of you who have a history, uh, with engineering and metro, where it's best is, uh, the old Schofield Brothers, or in part the old Schofield Brothers, who I did a lot of business with, uh, in prior decades. Uh, and that's, uh, DGT folks. Uh, and so, um, Kevin and Bert are going to present on, uh, stormwater, uh, the site, stormwater and septic, and take it away.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, Bob.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Bert Clory. I'm with DGT, formerly Schofield Brothers. Uh, I'm also here with Kevin too. Um, I think what we'll do is I'm just going to run through two topics, just going to do the, uh, the site layout. And then I'll move into the septic system. Then I'm going to turn it over to Kevin to do the stormwater. I'm going to spend a little less time on the site layout, though I think the main focus should be on the sewer, uh, the septic system and the, uh, in the wa- in the, uh, stormwater system. So, uh, just to start out, um, the, the driveway and the parking area, standard type of construction. The driveway entrance off of Washington Street is about a hundred and thirty feet west of Old Orchard, uh, Road, which is at the top of the page, uh, center line to center line. Uh, it's a twenty-two-foot wide, uh, driveway that enters the site, uh, enters into the standard type of, uh, parking layouts, uh, twenty-four-foot drive aisle, uh, in sixty-two parking spaces, standard width, uh, nine and standard length eighteen feet. Uh, that driveway continues through the parking area and it loops around, uh, like a small, uh, small island, uh, where there's additional parking on the side of the building. And it also allows the traffic to drive to the east. Drive to the east and then turn around and, and head back out.
Steven, Si, can you mute, please? We, Steven?
We submitted a, uh, a, uh, fire truck maneuvering plan as part of the, uh, plan set, just to demonstrate that the, the fire truck can maneuver around the site too. Uh, standard type of curbing, uh, on the, on the paved areas. Uh, it's precast concrete curb along the front of the building to separate the parking area from the raised, uh, concrete sidewalk, uh, that will run the entire length of the building and then around the, the east side. Uh, on the other sides of the parking layout, it's, uh, the, the standard, uh, Cape Cod berm, just a bituminous berm. The pedestrian, uh, walkway will continue around the backside of the building too. Again, being concrete and then just through a, a five-foot wide path, just for, for the travel around the building. And like I said, there's sixty-two parking spaces, uh. Yeah, I think that's, I think that pretty much covers it. Most of the work that's being done is outside of the fifty-foot no alteration zone. Uh, there will be some work within the, the hundred-foot buffer zone. Uh, but we really are trying to, to locate this building in a position that is between the larger wetland complex and a small isolated, uh, wetland in the, the front of the site. Uh, we're also trying to maintain the existing, uh, it's the Bailey Connector Trail that runs from Washington Street over to Greenwood Street. We're trying to maintain that, not alter, uh, the existing, uh, the existing path. Uh, so moving on to the, the septic system, uh, the design is, is based on seventy bedrooms, which equates to seventy-seven hundred, uh, gallons per day. Uh, it's designed in accordance with Massachusetts Title V, uh, regulations. The, because the design flow is what it is, it exceeds the four hundred and forty gallons per day, per acre. Uh, so it requires an IA system or an innovative alternative treatment system. Uh, and so just to walk through it, let's just start at the building. The sewage will enter a, the first compartment or the, the, the septic tank. It's a ten thousand five hundred gallon septic tank as the first compartment. Travel then into an eight thousand, uh, gallon second compartment. From there, it would travel into, uh, a two-tank system that is the Biomicrobics SeptiTech Star Model nine point zero. It's, it's really the nine point zero is a, uh, it's an approved technology. Um, stepping back, it's comprised of, uh, the Star four point five. You just add on, it's scalable to go from one four point five to the next four point five to the next four point five. The four point five is approved, uh, under general use, uh, under the, the Massachusetts Title V standards. The, the, the nine point O is, uh, because of its size, is under the provisional use. Um, and it's used not only to treat the water, to remove BOD and TSS, but it also, uh, it removes nitrogen. We are in, in a situation where that's required because of the, because of the, the gallonage that's going into the site. Um, and we're also within the zone too. We respect the fact that we're going to have a public water supply there that's going to service the building. Uh, so when we look at a, a nitrogen, um, uh, balance or a loading calculation, we're, we're, we're looking to reduce the nitrogen from the wastewater in order to assist with that loading analysis. From there, the Star nine, uh, the effluent from that, that treatment center goes into a pump chamber, which then pumps to a pressure distribution, uh, soil absorption system. Quite extensive. It's about a hundred and sixty feet by a hundred and ten feet. Um, the size of that is, is really based on the soils that are there. Uh, there was witness testing, uh, and I believe the gentleman brought that up. It was, uh, in November of twenty-two. There was several, I think there was three percolation tests. Uh, the lowest or the slowest percolation test was thirteen minutes per inch. Uh, so the system was based on, uh, that slowest percolation, uh, rate, uh, as well as the type of soils there. It's a sandy loam. Um, in addition to that, uh, the groundwater table in those test pits, um, was at about five feet with one at four and a half feet below the surface. Uh, so that really set where the groundwater table was going to be for us in order to set the bottom of the leaching facility. Uh, in addition to that, we did a mounting analysis. This is over two thousand gallons per day. Uh, using, using the standard types of values that you would use in a hand-toesh model. Uh, we've added one point two feet to, uh, the estimated seasonal high groundwater to give us some additional space to the groundwater table. Uh, we've also reached out to the, the hydrogeologists to confirm our use of the modeling software. Again, going back to what the gentleman said, we are looking at putting sewage into the ground. We're looking at putting stormwater into the ground, and we're looking at taking water out of the ground. Uh, so all of that needs to be, be fully, uh, fully fleshed out. Nevertheless, this system is designed in order to dispose of seven thousand seven hundred gallons per day with a treatment system that can produce effluent that is approximately five times better than the standard septic tank, uh, effluent, uh, as well as with the nitrogen, uh, reduction. So, I think I would like to turn it over to Kevin to go over some of the stormwater.
Uh, thanks, Bert. Um, once again, Kevin Riappell with DGT Associates. Um, and I'm going to talk about stormwater management and what we're doing, um, for our stormwater system for this project. As everybody currently knows, it is a fourteen point eight acre property that is all currently wooded. Um, grades on the site vary. Um, generally a flat site, except when you get down towards the wetland areas with the land slopes down towards the wetlands. Um, again, the existing walking path that exists today that we want to try to respect and maintain. So that was part of our design considerations, uh, as well for the project. Ultimately, when we looked at the existing conditions to the site, stormwater flowed in four different directions, uh, and those were our design points for the project. Uh, number one being what flows out to Washington Street. Design point number two is the Westerlea Butter. Uh, design point number three is the existing onsite wetland area. The isolated vegetated wetland here. And design point four is the large wetlands to the, uh, rear of the property here. As Bert noted, and it has been brought up, we did soil testing, uh, in the areas where we're proposing our infiltration facilities. Um, and all of those results have been submitted and are part of the plan set here. Main goal for the soil testing for the stormwater purposes was to determine, A, the type of soil and to be determined the seasonal high groundwater table. Uh, everything ultimately needs to be, uh, as far as infiltration goes, there needs to be a separation distance maintained in order to meet the regulations and the design requirements. Um, so that was the goal with our soil testing that we did in December, uh, for the, um, stormwater management system. Uh, we performed a hydrologic analysis for both the existing and proposed conditions to analyze the flows again to all four design points. Uh, we used, um, HydroCAD, uh, might be a buzzword for some of the technical people out there, but, um, all of our modeling software is, um, done using HydroCAD. The proposed projects, we're proposing an increase, uh, an impervious area of fifty thousand and fifty square feet. Um, obviously with an undeveloped site that is, you know, one hundred percent increase. And the intent of our design here and what we're, we're providing is to not increase any of the peak rates of runoff um, to any of the design points up to and including the hundred-year storm event. Uh, to achieve this, you know, all of the roadways, the parking areas, the building roof, uh, and all of the upgrading areas are being collected. All the runoff is being treated and then being directed to some underground infiltration and detention facilities. Uh, I'll expand on those in a minute here. Again, being that the site is undeveloped and we're now proposing this development here, according to the Massachusetts Stormwater Regulations, uh, this is considered a new construction project. And as designed, um, we are proposing to fully meet the recharge and water quality requirements for the project, uh, as well. Um, and ultimately, again, no peaks, uh, of, no peaks, peak rates of runoff increases and no volume increases to any of the design points. Water from runoff from the vast majority of the parking area and the loop drive The vast majority of the parking area and the loop driveway here is collected in deep some catch basins. Those deep some catch basins are fitted with a gas and oil hood. Uh, all of the runoff is then directed into uh, stormwater treatment units or what we're denoting as STUs. Uh, these are proprietary treatment devices. These are rated to. Uh, remove fifty percent of the total suspended solids or the TSS from the stormwater runoff. Uh, so all of the paved surfaces are being collected. Uh, and directed to. Various underground infiltration and detention facilities. Uh, rechargers number one is located here, kind of in the center of the little loop road here, and recharger number two is off the corner of the building. Both of these systems are precast concrete chambers, embedded and surrounded by clean stone. Uh, and again, these two systems are set a minimum of two feet above the seasonal high groundwater table. That's what's required by uh, the Massachusetts Stormwater Regulations. After we meet the recharge requirements, uh, runoff is then directed into underground detention facilities. Detention system number one is under the parking lot here. Detention system number two is along the rear of the building here. Again, these are precast concrete chambers. They're underground chambers uh, set on a bed of stone. But surrounded with an impermeable barrier, so no water is gonna leach into the ground from those. The way we regulate flow out of these systems and in order to uh, meet the uh, design requirements is the use of outlet control structures. Uh, simply put, these are manhole structures uh, with weir walls in them, set at certain elevations with certain orifices. To release water uh, during certain storm events. Uh, we also have a surface detention basin out here along the driveway. Um, and this is mainly to collect the runoff from the. Uh, portion of the driveway that's sloping back towards Washington Street. We don't wanna spill all of this runoff from the new driveway. Uh, out onto Washington Street. So what we're doing is we're gonna collect that in a trench drain. It'll be again sent through a stormwater treatment unit and then into a surface detention basin. Uh, very simple stormwater basin design here, uh, surface basin where water will then ultimately overflow out to the Westerlia Butter as it's doing today. Um. What does all this mean? Um, without getting too technical and reading my three hundred-page stormwater report, um. We are proposing to not increase any of the peak rates of runoff to any of the four design points for any storm event. That's the two-year, the ten-year. The twenty-five-year storm and the one hundred-year storm events. Uh, same thing with the volume of runoff. We're not proposing any increases in the volume of runoff to any of these design points. Um, I think it's important to note that uh, this existing vegetated wetland is also a vernal pool. So in order to. Maintain the, the qualities of the vernal pool system. We don't wanna starve that wetland system. We really wanna match the existing conditions um, to the runoff. Both the peak flows and the volume of runoff going to that. Um, and we're demonstrating that through our stormwater modeling, and it's all detailed in our report. So I just wanted to note that one specifically. That while we're showing very, very slight reductions, we're ultimately. Providing the same volume of runoff to this existing vernal pool here. Um. We are meeting the Mastie EP Stormwater Management Standards for new construction. Uh, that's for the minimum required recharge. That is for the uh, water quality volumes. And these underground infiltration basins are considered a low-impact development uh, stormwater technique. Um, I think it is important to note that um. The proposed stormwater management system. As currently designed, uh, is a very standard stormwater system. Uh, we design these all the time. Um, standard catch basin treatment units. We see a lot of good. Um, results from these treatment units. Um, these chamber systems, while big and large underground concrete vaults. Um, they do provide a lot of groundwater recharge um, back into the groundwater table. So. Uh, again, a very conventional, very standard stormwater system um, to meet the Mass DEP Stormwater Regulations. So that is my, my five-minute tour of the stormwater management system. I guess I could turn it back over to Bob or to the chairman?
Um, yeah, Rick, I, uh, you're muted, Rick.
There we go. Okay, uh, great and, 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 and nicely timed uh, presentation, Kevin. I'm sure that. Uh, both the, the uh, peer reviewer and uh, the various engineers we have in town. Will have other and further questions for you, but that, that was a terrific summary. Um, we are at nine o'clock, so I might not go uh, much further. Uh, Kevin, can you stop sharing your screen?
Sure.
Please, thank you. That was extremely useful. And so unless we have. A raft of questions, what I might do is talk with my uh, fellow board members about the next hearing date. Um. We don't have somebody from Tetra Tech, so I can't say when they'll be ready to look at things. Um. Bob, sort of i- i- if I said you can have whatever you want for further presentations, when would you like to do those and what would their topics be? Traffic's probably one of them.
Traffic for sure, uh, and uh, uh, public water supply would be the other major one I can think of.
Yeah. And how much lead time do you need to be ready for those? Probably not a whole lot, cuz you got your guys ready.
Uh, well, traffic, I, I think not much lead time. The public water supply might be a bit more, but not. You know.
Okay.
When, when are you thinking, I guess?
Well, I'm, 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 you know, I'm, 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 I'm trying to do my, my job of, of, of uh. Keeping the process moving without having all my board members quit and somewhere between those two uh, and points lies wisdom. Um. Um, board members, do you think we could do a meeting in the week of uh, today is the uh, the twelfth? We've got the twentieth for um. Um. For Farm Road, could we do a meeting on this one the week of the twenty-six, two weeks from now? How does that, how does that work for you, Jonathan and Zach and Todd?
Should be fine. I'm sorry, the, the week of uh. What did you say, Rick? The?
Uh, Tu- Tu- Tuesday is, is Sept- September. I wish, March twenty-sixth.
Tuesday's the twenty-sixth, yes, okay. Well.
Uh, that's. Just throwing that out there.
Yeah. That uh. That's fine.
That date works for me as well, Rick.
Zach?
Hi.
Okay. Um, all right, so I, I, I take a motion to continue the Washington Street hearing until uh. Uh, Tuesday night. March twenty-sixth, seven PM. If someone was interested in making that motion.
I still move.
Hmm, close. I'm gonna call that one a tie. We'll give it to Jonathan. Todd, you wanna second it?
Of course, I second.
Okay, moved, moved and seconded to continue the Washington Street hearing until uh, seven PM. Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Um, any further discussion? And I'll take this as a combined motion to continue and then adjourn. Genie, would that be okay? Do we have other business that we have to do?
Done.
Okay. So, uh, taking it as a combined motion to continue to uh, March twenty-sixth, seven PM, and then, then adjourn this meeting. Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. We'll do it by roll call. No backvotes, aye.
Pitch aye.
Lobby, aye.
McBride, aye.
All right, everybody, thank you very much for your patience and time tonight. We'll see you on that one in two weeks.
Thank you.
It's the chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.